This meeting of the Bryan City Board of Education for Monday, November 15th, 2021. If you would stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Kevin Mokal?
Scott?
Here.
Ben?
Here.
Deb?
Here.
Dustin?
Mike?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, I hope that you've all had a minute to look over the October regular board meeting minutes. I would ask if there's any additions, corrections, anything from anybody?
No.
All right, if not, I would accept a motion to approve those October minutes.
So moved.
Thank you, Deb.
Second.
Thank you, Mike.
We also need to approve the minutes from November 8th and November 9th as well.
Oh, I guess if I'd have read that whole thing, I would have seen that. So again, we need to, in a separate motion, approve the minutes from November 8th, November 9th, when we were down at the Capitol Conference. I forgot about that.
So moved.
Thank you, Ben.
Second.
Thank you, Mike.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so moving down, I don't think we have anybody signed in for public participation, so we'll move down to communications. And as we always do in our communications portion, we have a student spotlight. And so tonight, we'd like to have Mr. Lupo and his ensemble come forward and give us a little spotlight. Welcome, everybody.
Even welcome again. So as the students are getting ready here, first of all, Mr. Rary, thank you for inviting us to come down tonight. We'd like to show you actually two different things, both from the same piece. So what you see here before you is a group of students from the acapella choir. And we are currently in preparation for our winter concert, which will be Sunday, the 18th. I might have the actual date wrong, but Sunday, the 18th, if not the 19th, whichever one's the Sunday, at 2:00 PM at the Arts and Education Building. We have a piece called Joseph Dearest, Joseph Mine, that we're going to sing a few excerpts from for you. The first little bit of singing you're going to hear is actually the choir singing An Solfège, which is the music literacy technique that we utilize to learn all of our music through the course of the year. So we're going to use a brief section from the piece in that first, so you can kind of hear how we start to put the nuts and bolts together. So guys, we'll start at 52. An An Solfège. Never say that in performance, it's great. Mrs. Leonard, if you would. So you can predict with reliability on a piano, if you hit middle C, Laura, if you would, if you hit middle C, middle C will always sound the same way. As singers, we don't really have the same technique. I can't put two fingers on my throat and know that a B-flat is going to come out. So we use Solfège as a way to kind of orient ourselves to what things should sound like. So we're going to go back a little further, folks, if you move with me to 35. And we're going to sing a more substantial portion of the piece now on text. Interestingly enough, this particular arrangement has some Bryan connections. This piece was arranged by Julie Spangler, who is a Bryan High School graduate. It's being played by Julie's sister, Laura. And it's just, it's amazing that we have this fantastic network and community of musicians to draw from. So, all right, folks, here we go. Laura, do you want to give us two bars?
Two bars?
Yeah. So that piece will actually be performed by the full total program, the tenor bass choir, the trumpet choir, and the acapella choir at the Arts Net on the 18th or 19th at 2:00 PM.
I think it is 2:00.
I think it is 2:00, but, so again, thank you very much for inviting us.
Would they be able to say their names and their grades? Is that possible?
Absolutely.
Love to know who.
Hi, Chloe, I'm a senior.
Hello, I'm Jennifer, and I'm a senior.
I'm Alex, and I'm a senior.
I'm Nolan, I'm also a senior.
I'm Caitlin, I'm a sophomore.
I'm Katie, I'm a senior.
Very good. Well, thank you, guys. It's beautiful, beautiful. I look forward to the concert, too. Thanks for being here.
Our pleasure.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Great things, great things going on at Bryan High.
It's a season, it's already here.
Very good.
That's great. Thank you. Of course, appreciate it, of course. Okay. There you go. Thanks again.
All right, that was great. Let's move on down then to some of our reports. I think we'll start with the four-county report from Syndra.
Yeah, so I have the four-county report from Syndra Keeler. Lots of good things happening over at Four County Career Center. They had the law enforcement and security tactic students who are the official courtesy corps at the Skills USA Fall Leadership Conference, and that was at the Greater Columbus Convention Center, so fully replaced to us. They assisted the staff and the presenters at the conference. The members included Alex Brown, William Douglas, and Travis Rosenbaum. They also selected their students of the month for October, and from Bryan, it included William Decatur, who is in the IT Academy for Computer Programming and Game Design, and also Jaden Yates in the IT Academy with Computer Networking and Cyber Security. So congratulations to both of them, job well done. They have over 500 member Four County Career Center Skills USA participants in the local, regional, and state national Skills USA Leadership and Skilled Competition. The members from Bryan include Connor Brown, Casey Allspaw, and McKenna Carter. They also have student ambassadors that are seniors that are chosen each year based on recommendations and by their leadership abilities. They represent the school in a variety of capacities. Representing Bryan include Lexi Allspaw, Connor Brown, and Keegan Nichols. Williams County Career Base Intervention, also known as CBI, those classes participated in a service learning project and spent the week bulching, pulling weeds, and picking sticks at the Imagination Station Playground here in Bryan. And some of the students that were helping out, I'm sorry, many students from Bryan, too many to list, she said, helped out with this project. And the BPA, the Business Professionals of America, held their 2021 and '22 installation of new officers for the local chapter. And the officer from Bryan at Four County Career Center is William Decatur. So job well done to all of them.
That's great.
They're in the thick of all of their events, so things are rolling at Four County.
Good. All right, well, thank you, Syndra, for bringing us that report. Move down, I guess, then to administrative reports. Athletics.
So Mr. Savage is on vacation this week, so he gave us his report, and I will read that here. We are in the midst of transitioning between the fall and the winter season, so not a whole lot of contests right now, but still some good things happening. So we have the NWOAL Leadership Conference that's going to be taking place the first week of December. It's actually on December 1st, and they are gathering at the Solder Heritage Inn, and that's a great opportunity for representatives from each school to come together and work on leadership skills together. So it's an NWOAL Leadership Conference, so they'll have many student athletes there. The six representing Bryan City Schools are juniors Dylan Dominic and Paige Kunsman, sophomore Sam Harold in Illinois, and freshman Don Malinga and Caitlin DeWitt. They're also preparing for a fall and winter national signing day. This is for student athletes that are ready to commit to the next level. So that's going to be taking place on December 15th at 2:15 in the high school cafeteria and Commons. So some names to be coming, as students are still making their decisions for that, so names will be released. They're also going to do a fall sports state recognition ceremony Friday, December 17th, at the Swanton Girls Basketball Game, and that will take place between the JV and varsity games that will have representatives from our state qualifiers in golf, tennis, and cross country. So we've got a slew of events on the horizon once the season's kick off, so just after Thanksgiving, we'll see the thick of the winter sports season take over.
That's great.
So that's a report from athletics.
All right. Thanks, Mark, for bringing that. Bryan Elementary. Mrs. Thormeyer.
Good evening, everyone. Things that have been happening in the elementary school, the Veterans Day program obviously was just this past week, and we're super appreciative that we're able to do that every year. We've received lots of community comments back from that, which is always, just makes you feel good and lets you know that you're doing it for the right reasons. People were very complimentary of our students' behavior and how they were responsible and showed respect for those veterans, so we're pretty proud of them for that. We started the Lunch Buddies program here, where there are some senior mentors that are joining some of our students over here that started this past week. We're still working some new ones in, but so far, those senior mentors basically can walk on water in the eyes of our little people, so already it's really exciting, and they're, you know, they're very welcoming to them. We just ended our first trimester, grade cards go home this week. Parent-teacher conferences were the last two weeks, and we had astounding attendance. About 98% of our parents showed up for parent-teacher conferences, so that's awesome. Lots of people signed up and actually came, so that's great. A lot of times, you have to make phone calls, and that wasn't the case this year, so it was reassuring. We also had the PTO provide meals, so we were appreciative of that as well. Christmas for Kids is going on right now. Today was the first day. Last year, we raised a very substantial amount of money. We hit the $5,000 mark last year, so we have lofty goals. We did put an incentive plan into place to help the kids at certain levels. Mr. Rary agreed to join us in some type of unpleasant kind of situation, practically involving like ice cream, or pies, or duct tape, something like that. So he's one of the top, top levels there, so that'll be exciting. And then we have a couple other little programs that are going on here. Mrs. Dominic is doing the math facts and sight words in kindergarten in first grade, or first grade and second grade, and they are way ahead of the game in that because of those incentive programs. Kids are super excited and trying to get their names on the bulletin boards and earn their stickers for their math facts. They get a Happy Meal once they get all the different math facts, so they're working real hard, and the teachers have been real appreciative about it as well, so.
That's great.
There we have it.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Mrs. Thormeyer, I just want to say, Mrs. Thormeyer is a huge help in organizing the Veterans Day Assembly. Her and Mr. Allspaw are at the epitome of making that assembly happen, and it is a tear-jerker every year, and the respect that our students show to our local veterans is second to none. It's phenomenal, so I just want to tell her job well done, because it was a phenomenal ceremony last week.
Thank you. Thanks so much for doing that. All right, now we'll hear from the Bryan Middle High School report.
Yes, we have a substitute in today, Mr. Bassett.
I was going to say, Mr. Bassett.
A lot of events, there's an awards ceremony going on tonight, too, so we're down.
A lot of things going on tonight, so I'm going to pinch you a little bit here.
That's all right.
October Golden Bear Students of Action at the Middle School High School, 7th Grade Kinley Blitenship and Casey McDade, 8th Grade Caitlin Moss and Aiden Rodenhever, 9th Grade Abigail Goble, Jaden Mannan, 10th Grade Lisette Stickney and Carme Genter, 11th Grade Brooklyn Tracy and Ally Redhead, and 12th Grade Mallory Staub and Aquadina Cordic, so congratulations to those students. December 2nd, the high school students participating in College and Career Day. It's different for every grade level. Seniors will be playing the game of life, the real game of life of budgeting in life. The juniors will be going on a college visit. Sophomores will be visiting Four County and some area businesses in our community. And the freshmen have a busy day, as they have junior achievement, have team building and leadership activities. And the Bryan Fire Department is doing AED and hands-on CPR training for our freshmen as well. Our Academically competes this Thursday in the annual Academic League Tournament, so good luck to them. Congratulations to our Skills USA Leadership Members, Vice President Connor Brown, Secretary Casey Allspaw, and at-large Member McKenna Carter. And Christmas for Kids at the high school starts the week after Thanksgiving, so trying to raise some money there. It's a little bit different timetable than the elementary, but that starts after Thanksgiving. And last and not least, a shout-out to our cast, crew, and advisors of the play this weekend, The Curious Incident of the Dog in the Night, I believe I said that correctly. What a fantastic show, and they just did a phenomenal job there. Talent's always impressed me. I'll just go ahead with my report, too, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Gifted testing, 2nd, 5th grade is complete. Talked about that, I was getting ready to start last board meeting. Results will be analyzed and sent home to the parents here in the near future. Wednesday, the district will hold our annual district-wide safety drill that we're required to do by law, and messages have gone home to parents about that and giving them a heads-up of what we'll be doing that day. In the cafeteria world, you know, we're under the seamless summer option for this year, and part of that is we were able to pick up St. Patrick's School as well. They had an incident where they were having some trouble staffing their cafeteria, so we were able to provide meals for St. Patrick's as well, which helps us, we reimbursement from the state through that as well. And the month of October, when you look at that, we were just short of 25,000 lunches served that month and over 5,000 breakfasts, so we continue to see increased levels of kids eating in our cafeteria, which is good news. Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Last month, I skipped over you, and this month, he barged in ahead of you. So our Director of Teaching and Learning, Mrs. Cox.
Good evening. So a couple of things I wanted to share. One of my roles is to look at data and see where we can grow in areas of our weaknesses and then celebrate our successes. So a couple of things that I'm looking at are, due to COVID, we know that there was some learning loss, and to what degree, we don't know yet. So I'm continuing to look at that and focus on that. I can tell you, in first grade, they have their fluency checks, first through, third grade had fluency checks when we started school right away in August, and then we did it again in October, right before parent-teacher conferences. We'll do a check again in January, we'll do another check in May. So in first grade for fluency, we grew by 27%. So first graders, in the fall, first graders should be reading 13 correct words per minute. So 75% of our students were in the 50th percentile or above, so reading 13 words per minute or above. So that's a growth of 27%, so I was excited about that. And that'll continue to grow as we move on. In second grade, we had a growth of 18.8% from August to October. A typical second grader would read 62 correct words per minute. And for third grade, we had a growth of 12.1%, and a third grader in the fall would read 87 correct words per minute. So I'm going to continue to track that, and of course, I'll do it this year, and then be able to compare data over the years as well, but it's just something that we're looking at. We also did something a little different this year, where we had, we're using Ames Web as our diagnostic, and we have one person doing grades K1 and another person doing grades 2, 3. So it's more consistent, and the students are getting the same, same assessment. And that information went home with parents, I believe, at parent-teacher conferences. Something else that we are looking at is the value-added data that came back. I am thrilled to share with you that we are in the growth, growth green, we're all in green, which is great, evidence that the district students made more than expected growth, or there is some light green evidence that the district students made growth as expected. So that was all green for this year. We did not have yellow, orange, or red, so we were thrilled about that. And value-added information is, it's the growth from year to year, but a student is comparing their own performance from the previous year. And then I don't have any new information on the dyslexia bill, the House Bill 436. I have been in several webinars saying the same thing, it's coming, it's coming, so hopefully by mid-December, we should know the requirements of House Bill 436. On Friday, we had our professional development for our staff, and some of you may want to know what happens on a professional development day. A lot happens on a professional development day. It's very busy, both at the elementary and at the high school. Just a few things that happened on that day. Mr. Bassett offered a CPI refresher course to our staff. We had our PBIS team meet. The state support team wanted to have our PBIS team, who has been recognized by the state, record where they've been, where they started, and where they've been, and where they want to go, so other schools can see their PBIS journey. So our PBIS team was able to do that. Our social studies committee at the elementary is continuing to meet and look over curriculums for social studies. No decision has been made. And at the high school, we had our department meetings. Now's the time where we look at scheduling classes for next year, so we held department meetings, and then we held science curriculum meetings, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, any questions on any of the reports?
I do have, since I pinched hit for athletics tonight, I just have something hot off the press here, that Ally Zimmerman was selected to, she was the NWOAL Player of the Year in soccer, first team all-district, and second team all-Ohio.
Oh, wonderful.
So that just came in just here in the last two hours.
That's great. Great, congratulations to her. All right, so move down to the treasures, reports, and recommendations.
First, I want to start off with, Mr. Rary and I went to the Board of Election. Their board meeting was this afternoon to certify the results of the election and are proud to update you that we now have an official vote tally for the levy, 1,096,4 to 1,055 against, so the substitute emergency levy passed by a margin of 41 votes. So we are very thankful to the community for their support and are looking forward to be able to move ahead with those funds on a permanent basis.
Yep, great.
Following up, we have your regular financial reports available to you. We'll note the total fund balance at the end of October was $18,794,200.21. Moving on, the amended permanent appropriations for this month is an increase of $44,771.35, primarily consisting of about $36,000 between student-directed activities and district activities, which are both, you know, student-oriented funds. The change in the general fund was limited to $2,350 this month. Second, we have a resolution to convey Lincoln School property to the city of Bryan, which may be confusing, because we've done that once. In reviewing some property records, as we're going through the process of selling Portland Street property, we realized that in error, a restriction on the deed to Lincoln property was left off of the deed that was filed with the city, and that restriction is an important part of how the school conveyed the property to the city to begin with. So we have worked with the city and have come to an agreement that the city is going to deed the property back to the school, and the school is going to turn right around and deed the property back to the city with that restriction on the deed in place. Our attorneys tell us that requires a new resolution on our part, so we're going ahead and getting that taken care of now, so that when the city is ready to make that exchange, we will have the authority to go ahead and file that deed at that time. So we're just correcting an oversight from an action that was taken by the board about three to four years ago at this point. So nothing really new there, we're just basically cleaning up some paperwork.
Okay, I'm sorry, could you summarize what that restriction is?
Yes.
In just a few words?
Yeah, so the restriction, basically, the condition upon which we gave the property to the city was that the city used it for public use. And so if the city should ever stop using it for public use, then the property returns to the school board. And next, we have a five-year forecast, which, if I can switch this over here, there we go. Just going to go over some of the major assumptions that we have here. This is an overview, starting with last fiscal year through fiscal '26 projected, just a comparison in the black of the revenues that we're anticipating, and then the gray, the expenses that we're anticipating, just to show that '21 and '22 mainly because of grants, which we'll talk about a little bit later. We've been seeing some net positive remaining funds, and we're going to be moving, as we go forward, into some slight deficit spending. The yellow line, at least I think it's yellow, I'm a little colorblind, the yellow line represents our fund balance through those years. So as you can see, a very slight trend down in the general fund that we're projecting over the next five years, but very slight. This was prepared with the assumption that the substitute levy passed, so we are showing what we anticipate with the substitute levy pass. This is the general property tax that we bring in. The increase that you're seeing is owing to the increase in property valuations. We received about 10% overall increase in property valuations. That's translating to about a $400,000 a year increase in revenue to the general fund, and we're anticipating that we're going to go back to the much more normal, about 1% per year increase in property tax, so that's why we have to step up there between '22 and '23, and then level off as we go to the end of the year. And if you have a question, please just stop. Income tax, you can see in fiscal '21, we took a big step back from COVID. We've seen some strong returns from '22, and then we're going to just continue to expect, we average about 1.5% to 1.9% increase per year over the life of this income tax, so we're just continuing that projection out from where we feel this year is coming in. State unrestricted aid, you're seeing a jump here, that's the fair school funding formula, where we're getting more money in '22 and '23, and then, as you'll recall, the way that was designed is a six-year phase-in, but the state has only committed itself to a two-year phase-in, so we have limited the effects of the fair school funding past those first two years, just to kind of try to be conservative in the amount of money that we expect to see come in. If the fair school funding does, in fact, continue to phase in, we will see large increases in the monies that we receive in fiscal '24, '25, and '26, if that phase in continues. Additionally, we're not seeing such a big jump on this screen in '22, although we will in the next screen, because what has also happened is a lot of expenses have come off the books. So we, the increase in revenue has not been as large as you may expect, because a lot of it has really been a reduction in expenses because of direct funding of a lot of things like the scholarships and open enrollment. But we do have this about $400,000 jump in state restricted aid, and that's because some things like the student wellness and success funding, which wasn't a completely different fund the last two years, has been rolled in to the bigger parts. So more of the money that is coming from the state has an earmark to it, and is now coming into the state restricted fund. So we're seeing increases here. It has things that we specifically have to spend on for. It has things that we specifically have to spend on, for the most part, things we've already been doing, so it's not really going to require any new spending on our part. We were kind of ahead of the curve in meeting some of these things that the state is looking for us to do. Moving to spending money over time, this is on the right, the total expenditures for the period, and then on the left, kind of a breakdown of how those are changing over time. In 2021, we saw about 58% of our expenditures were salaries, and then the next 22% or so was benefits. By 2026, with expected increases in salaries, and our goal of trying to hold non-salary and benefit costs as level as possible, we're going to see salaries increase to about 60% and benefits increase a little bit more to where they're combined about 85% or so of our expenses. That's pretty normal. We're a service organization, right? Our, well, our product is teachers, basically, that are in the classroom, teaching the kids, so we expect to see a lot of salaries and benefits. That's just kind of how it's been changing over time. And the increase in, the drop down in expenses you see in '21 and '22 are products of the ESSER grants, the federal grants related to COVID, plus in '22, you're seeing costs moving away from the district and to the state as part of that fair school funding. Specifically, personnel services, in '21 and '22, we moved some teachers to grants, that's why we're seeing that step back up into '23. Fiscal '23 is the last year of our contract with both our teaching staff and our classified staff. We have assumed for the purpose of this projection, a 0% increase in the base salary in '24, '25, and '26, that next contract period. Again, we're being conservative with revenue, so we're also being conservative in expenses. When we have a better feel for what's going, what our revenues are going to be, we'll have a better feel for what we can do as far as salaries in those three years. Likewise, in benefits, we saw some benefits moved to grants, and they are going to come back in '23, and then we're seeing slight increases as we go along in '24, '25, and '26. One good thing that, about our contracts is we pay a flat rate towards employee insurance, so we are not subject to big year-to-year spikes on insurance costs, because we have, the brunt of that premium rise is, is taken on by the employees rather than by the district itself, and we negotiate where that line is every, every three years in our contracts. Purchased services, we see a big drop-off. Again, that's the, that's the effect of fair school funding, because in the past, things like the John Peterson Scholarship, open enrollment, and, gosh, there's, there's another transfer, I'm sorry, it dropped off my mind. Those have been recorded as expenses. The state gave us the money, and then they took it back away, and it was, it was an in-and-out transaction. The state is now doing, paying those things directly, so they're not coming off of our books, and so we can drop those expenses down. Again, we're, we're basically forecasting those flat. We do our utmost to try to get as much mileage out of each dollar that the district spends, and we try very hard to hold that line. And that brings us to our fund balance. As you can see, in last year, we had a positive change of $677,000. We're hoping to see a positive change of around $820,000 this year. And then, starting next year, we're projecting, and again, that's because of the ESSER grants, that that change is happening, about $180,000 deficit spending, and about $450, and then slightly increasing as we go towards the end of the forecast period. So that is an overview of the forecast, and the entire forecast is in your minutes, or in your exhibits. And are there any questions on the forecast?
I don't have any right now.
Nope. All right, then we would like to recognize some donations. We received 25 copies of Soul Surfer from the Williams County Public Library, five large golf umbrellas to help with arrival and dismissal from school from Andrew Zoniel and Low, a con trumpet from Tom Keen, and $50 for the music department in memory of George Gebhardt.
All right. Any questions on that for Kevin? Anything you want to add? I would then accept that motion to approve the Treasurers' reports and recommendations.
So moved.
Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Thank you, Deb.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on down, we've got old business. We don't really have any old business, other than, again, to reiterate our appreciation to the community for their support of the levy, so that we can continue all the good work that we're doing here at Bryan City Schools. Mark, I didn't know if you had anything you'd like to add?
You said it best. We appreciate the community's support and the stability that this provides the district in moving forward to, again, provide those opportunities to our students.
Yep, and we really do appreciate it. Big thank you to the, to the community. New business? Any new business? No? No? All right, then we'll move on to your recommendations. Mr. Rayry?
All right, thanks, Scott. So first up, we have the approval of a student who met the graduation requirements, and this is an early graduate, so this is Antonio Weimer. So we congratulate him on his achievements, and we wish him the best of luck in moving forward. Next up, we have a MOU with our Shalom Counseling and Mediation Center. We are always looking to provide more mental health services to our students. One of the services that we provide is school-based mental health therapy, where therapists come into our building to meet with students during the school day, taking away the, any challenges that might present for them to meet with them after school hours. So we have extended an agreement with them for them to provide our services. We also partner with Renewed Mind, so this is now a second mental health agreement that we have in place to help benefit our students.
Very good.
We have the recommendation for the approval of indoor track as a club sport for this winter season. Periodically, from time to time, we have enough interest shown by our track athletes to participate in some indoor competitions throughout the winter months. This is coached by our track staff that we already have hired, and they do have enough interest to participate in some small tournaments and competitions throughout the winter months. So that is why it's just a club sport. And next up, we have the resolution for the temporary expansion of the employment of substitute teachers. So Governor Dwyane signed Senate Bill 1 into effect about 10 to, 10 days, two weeks ago. And what that does is it takes away the requirement that all substitutes have to have a four-year bachelor's degree, and allows schools, all school districts, to set a local education requirement for hiring substitutes. Along with that, they have to be of good moral standing and of good moral character, and pass the certified BCI and FBI background checks. So we have discussed at Bryan City Schools that if, we have some student teachers who we feel would be qualified, and they are completing their student teaching processes here in our classrooms, working with our students daily, we have about a handful of them throughout the district, and are seeking, or some are seeking the ability to come into our buildings the second semester, but, for instance, they typically, in their student teaching, don't have their supervising teacher around. Once they get rolling, the supervisor teacher is available to assist, but the idea is that they're taking over the classroom. So in essence, we now have the ability to call them the substitute in the classroom, even though their cooperating teacher will still be around. It allows them to take over that class officially. So we're looking to utilize their services for this school year only, because this temporary expansion of employment is only for the remainder of this school year. So we thought that that would be a benefit to some of our staffing challenges that we face right now, especially with our substitute shortage.
Absolutely. Very good.
So those are the administrative recommendations.
Any questions on those? Nope. I think that's a great idea, though, that we've come up with for the use of the substitutes from the student teachers. So let's have a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendations.
My motion to accept the superintendent's recommendations.
I'll second that. Thanks, Ben. Thanks, Mike.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and then we'll continue on with Mr. Rayry and the personnel recommendations.
Yeah, so starting with letter A in personnel recommendations, we're hiring, are recommending to hire Britten Bosco as a mentor teacher, and she would then be the mentor for a new employee for a specific set, period of time, to help them through their resident educator programming. So that would become, or that was effective November, would become effective today, November 15th.
Mark, that is for a limited amount of time?
Yeah, it's through the duration of their resident educator programming. So a teacher has to meet, in order to qualify for their five-year teaching professional license, they have to go through a series of rigorous components with a mentor to ensure that they are keeping up with the profession and progressing from their first year of teaching to their fourth year of teaching appropriately, and then they can get their next licensure.
Nice.
So we assign teachers to help oversee their progress.
Very good.
Yep. Next up is the approval of the '21, '22 winter supplementals. We have a few to add to the list. We're looking to add Rob Watson as a junior high basketball coach for 9% of the base, Doug Miller as an assistant bowling coach for 13% of the base, and Lisa Frame joining the swim program as an assistant coach for 13% of the base. Letter C, the approval of certified and classified substitutes, just a few names to add to our substitute lists. We have Summer Fernuhue, Teresa Wieland, and Michael Slapman. With letter D, the non-renewal of supplemental contracts for the fall season that just finished. I always make note, this is an annual action and in no way, shape, or form reflective of their performance. It's simply an annual, annual action, and these are for our non-certificated staffs, or our non-teaching staff. And that is, all their names are listed per the exhibit. In letter E, we have just a few corrections for some of the hirings we've previously made. Sherri Robinson is still an aide, and still at 4.25 hours per day, but not at the high school, at the elementary. So just a change there. And then another correction, John Minor and Delaney Miley, it is correcting their pay percentages as assistant coaches in the girls' program. That is due in part, we're going to see in letter G, there's been a resignation within that program, so they are re-shifting some of the assistant coaching duties in the girls' basketball program.
Okay.
Letter F, adding some volunteers to some of our athletic programs, Connor Ford to the wrestling program, and Tyler Jones pending, passes his background checks, which seem to take some time in the mail to get to us, again, to the wrestling program. Letter G, a couple of resignations. Thomas Apple resigned with us as a bus driver, effective October 28th, and Joe Good resigned his girls' basketball assistant coaching position, and that was effective November 11th. Letter H is a retirement, our first one, I believe, of, for next school year, so congratulations to Susie Guilford, who will finish out the remainder of this school year, and actually a little bit of next school year, as her retirement date is set for August 31st of 2022. So congratulations to her, as she prepares for her future. And letter I, the non-renewal of just a couple of substitutes who will no longer be in our sub-list, that's Cassandra Clark and Randy Luke.
All right. Any questions on the personnel recommendations? All right, then I would accept a motion to approve those personnel recommendations from Mr. Rayry.
So moved.
Thank you, Deb.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mike.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
So next up, we have some recommendations for some policy items. We have, we'll have to take two separate motions on some of the policies, so we have a, annually, Neola is the company that updates all of our school policies. I will not go through all of these, because there is roughly 10 or 15 listed there, but those are all policies that will have slight updates to reflect either legislative updates, school policy updates, our policy updates here at Bryan City Schools. So those are in their second reading. Those have been listed now on the October and now the November board agenda, and have been available for your review. So if there's not any questions, I would seek a motion to approve those updated policies.
So moved.
Second.
Mike, thank Deb, or Ben?
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then our first reading, we had one that was brought to our attention just recently that didn't make it into the group that we just approved, but this next one is on its first reading, meaning we do have a few more board meetings to review this, and that's Policy 5223. It's the release time for religious instruction. That is a policy that most school districts happen to have on hand, should there ever be the need for a student who approaches us and voluntarily wants to attend an off-campus, non-Bryan City School religious program or a church event. It gives us the ability to excuse their absence or their time away from our school day to attend that. So if we have that on, if we have this policy, we have the ability to excuse those students to attend their voluntary attendance to any type of religious instruction that they may choose. So, again, that's the first reading, so that's basically an FYI at this point.
Okay.
And that would undergo a second reading next month.
Yep.
I just have to say, I, I realize, I see it's already mentioned as a second reading above what we just approved.
Oh, I apologize, it's listed twice then.
I'm sure it's just a mistake.
Probably with a, with a, yep, that's a clerical error, but it's definitely the first reading.
Yes.
Yep, so I apologize for that, so we'll wipe that out of there.
Thanks for catching that, Ben.
Good catch, Ben.
Yep, thank you.
Just a clerical error, again, there's so many of these listed.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay.
So no motion is needed, because that's just a first reading.
Appreciate it, correct. All right, thank you, Mark, appreciate all of that. Points of information, I'll let you go ahead and...
Yeah, so we'll just start here.
Over some dates?
Yep, some important dates coming up. Our next regular Board of Education meeting is Monday, December 13th, right back here at 7:00 PM. And then Kevin and I thought it would be good to start talking about our January organizational meeting, which happens right after the first of the year. As a reminder, we have to complete that before January 15th.
Right.
So in looking at the calendar, the first two Mondays of the month are Monday, January 3rd and Monday, January 10th. Our recommendation is to stay a little further away from the new year and look at Monday, January 10th to host that organizational meeting.
I would concur.
Okay. And that's still, if we have weather, we always, weather is a major factor in January, that still gives us five days.
In between there.
To reschedule if needed.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
December 3rd is just too quick after the, after the holidays. People are just getting back. I know we, things are starting back up, but there could be some hiccup, so I think the 10th is a better day.
Yep. So we'll set that for January 10th. And then I'll also be discussing with the board, because we have an earlier January board meeting, January 10th now, and at that organizational meeting, we'll talk about our board meeting dates through the remainder of 2022. Usually, there's a longer gap between the first board meeting of the year and the second in February, maybe the possibility of a board retreat day at some point during the month of January or February, to allow us to convene to talk about strategic planning and any other elements that we feel necessary to keep pushing forward with Bryan City Schools. So we don't have to discuss that date now, I know we're missing Dustin as well tonight, but I just wanted to throw that out on your radar, that we could look to maybe set a date at some point.
Sure.
For, if, if you're interested.
Very, very interesting. But I'm also now confused, so let's back up to the January.
Okay.
January 10th will be our organizational meeting?
Traditionally...
And our regular board meeting?
And our regular.
Yeah, traditionally, we hold the regular board meeting immediately following the organizational meeting.
Good question, yep.
And are we, okay.
It doesn't necessarily have to be that way, if you all want to come two different nights in January.
I just know that we, no, and that's fine, I just want to clarify that. So we can talk about this, I just want to, because then moving, you know, we moved our regular meeting dates this year because of some multiple conflicts that happened in multiple months. So we did that. Whether we do that the same or change, that, we can decide that as well, correct?
Yep, during that meeting, we can set our...
Because again, I think it's worth looking at the entire calendar, rather than moving multiple board meetings in during multiple months, or possibly changing the date, the day.
Yep, so we can definitely do that during the...
Ben, great.
Just a reminder that Mike and Ben, along with myself and Kevin, are set for our next Business Advisory Council meeting, that's this Wednesday, and that's at 7:15 AM. So we're looking forward to that, and meeting with our community members. And I just made notes, typically during the month of December, if it's okay with you guys, if not, we can, we can definitely change this, but we don't have our administrators' report during the month of December as a little holiday treat from a late evening, but if you wish to have them there, we can definitely... you wish to have them there, we can definitely arrange that, but if we're okay holding true to that...
I think we're okay.
Tradition that we set.
See you back in January.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they'll just have lots to say in January.
That's right.
There you go.
I believe that's all the points of information.
All right. Anything else for the good of the cause? Mike, Ben, Deb, Kevin? All right, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Ben.
Well, second to that.
Thanks, Mike.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. Thanks, Chris. Tony, is Tony back there? Thanks, Tony.